Okay, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. It's time to call the meeting of Tuesday, May twentieth, to order. Our first item is to approve the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition, and that is in regards to the Family Service Center Elevator Modernization Project.
Will you approve with additions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same motion carried, and we will put that elevator issue on at approximately nine thirty this morning. Okay, our next item is citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items that are not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? Third and final call. Any citizens to be heard? Okay, we'll move on. Approval of bills and vouchers.
Sure.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the bills. And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same motion carried. Minutes. We have minutes from the sixth and the fifteenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same motion carried. Moving right along. Okay, at eight thirty-five item, we have the presentation from MetroCog regarding the Metro 2040 Mobility for the Future Long Range Transportation Plan. We got a couple of them here today, huh? You're gonna double team us.
Almost got you outnumbered.
Yeah, today, too. Yeah, we have one that's out of the country, and we have one who's recovering from illness, so. Welcome, this morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. William, I think you were, were you gonna start this off?
I'm going to start this off.
Okay.
We appreciate the opportunity today to bring to you our final draft of our Long Range Transportation Plan Metro 2040. See if I can get this work okay. As you know, MetroCog is a designated metropolitan planning organization for the region, and we're tasked with fulfilling federal requirements for transportation, one of which is the development and maintenance of the long-range transportation plan. Plan itself must be updated every five years. My legislation was last updated in two thousand and three. We'll be looking at it again in two thousand and nineteen. It must cover a time horizon of at least twenty years. We go a little bit further, we do it over a twenty-five year timeframe. The plan itself must be multimodal. We not only look at street and highway projects, but we look at bicycle, pedestrian, transit, and other modes of transportation. By law, it has to be fiscally constrained, which basically means the funds that we have identified for projects over the next twenty, twenty-five years can't exceed what we can reasonably expect in revenue for that timeframe. And all of this is under an umbrella of public involvement. We have proactive outreach to the public to get them involved and integrated into the transportation planning process from the beginning. We started developing this in the spring of two thousand and thirteen. Since then, we've had three very good public involvement meetings. We've had discussions with our Transportation Technical Committee, our Study Review Committee, and our planning partners at Federal Highway, FTA, both state DOTs, and the transit agencies in Fargo and Morehead. We started by finding out what the situation was gonna be like in twenty years. We looked at a lot of socioeconomic and demographic data. Population and households are a big part of that. Tells us how many people are gonna be around in two thousand and forty and where they're gonna live. We anticipate about a forty-three percent change in population between now and two thousand and forty.
About what percentage?
Forty-three percent change. We expect to be around three hundred thousand by the year two thousand and forty. If you look either on the slider in your handout, you see a map of where we anticipate growth to be for households. A lot of that is in southwest Fargo and west Fargo, but there's also a lot of growth to the east of Morehead and to southeast of Morehead. We also developed-
Excuse me, is this where the projection for three hundred thousand, is that for Cass and Clay County?
Correct. That's for the MetroCog region, which is, which I should have had a map in there.
Which has been extended, yeah. I got the map in here.
For that region. We also developed a set of goals. The public was very instrumental in helping us set these goals. They put a lot of emphasis on maintaining the existing system and maintaining the efficiency and performance of the system, so we built our plan and did our project selections based on projects that would meet those goals. We first started by discussing with all of our planning partners what kind of revenues were gonna be available over the next twenty to twenty-five years. Since we were focusing on maintaining the existing system, we looked at what kind of costs would be involved with operations and maintenance of the system over that timeframe as well. We also looked at the major rehabilitation projects that have been scheduled by local jurisdictions and by the state DOTs, as well as those projects that we have programmed in our two thousand and fifteen Transportation Improvement Program. Once we develop projects and revenues and costs for these projects, it gives us an idea of what we had left available to do new projects. We developed a set of projects based on the input that we received from the public and from our committees. We prioritize those based on need, and we came up with a fiscally constrained list of projects, projects that we have funding for. We also have an illustrative list of projects that if and when federal funds become available, those projects could be done because we did identify that they were needed in the region. This map shows the existing and committed network through two thousand and twenty. This is a compilation of our Transportation Improvement Program and local capital improvement programs for the region. It's basically adding new lanes to facilities, widening facilities, intersection and signalization projects throughout the region. Major rehabilitation projects, the state projects are identified in red, the locals are identified in blue. As you can see, there's a major rehabilitation project on US ten between Dilworth and Glidman, I ninety-four through Morehead. Those will be accomplished. As I stated, we developed a fiscally constrained plan with the funds that we had left after preservations and operation and maintenance. What we see here are the short-term projects are identified in green, the midterm projects are in blue, and the long-term projects are identified in red. Those projects we identified as being needed, but we can fiscally constrain, are identified in gray. Clay County has a few good projects in the mix here, Fifty-S Street South. We're looking to extend Twentieth Street on the south side, pave fourteenth street, it's currently gravel, and improvements along US seventy-five. And if you look on the map, you'll notice that the section of seventy-five south of Forty-Fifth Sixth Avenue is gray. We actually could financially constrain that plan, but the Minnesota DOT is only looking at their ten-year plan. They won't let us program anything that's not already included in their ten-year plan. But that section would help complete a loop to the south and to the west to connect in with improvements on the North Dakota side to provide kind of a southern beltway through the region. Also on this map, you'll notice that we have various corridor preservation possibilities identified. Fifteenth Avenue north, some to the south there on county roads twelve and sixteen. The ones to the south would provide connectivity to the interstate and would open up those corridors for development, but maintain the corridors for transportation improvements to make those available. They would eventually provide a cutoff from I ninety-four to the south to get over to Fifty Street in North Dakota, and a little bit further south, another southern route to kind of bypass the metropolitan area. But we're looking to help preserve these corridors for future improvements so that when the time is right to build over the next forty years, the right-of-way will be available.
Probably the biggest piece, you know, from the county commission's perspective, again, like Bill said, is that Sixtieth Avenue, Cassad twelve from seventy-five to the Red River, you know, preserving the corridor, you know, preparing to widen it and the bridge in cooperation with Fargo, 'cause then you can see as we get into Fargo, the last piece, the Fifty-Second Avenue there, Project Thirty-four from Forty-Fifth to Cheyenne, and then we can commit federal funds from Cheyenne Street from Fifty-Second up to ninety-four, so then, you know, that kind of southern beltway that we've talked about for years and years and years, we can finally realize that as a real reliever route. I mean, it's not a high-speed corridor, but it's, you know, it's a four, five lane arterial roadway that kind of really moves traffic.
So with the flood control projects that were going on in south Fargo, did that, did that make that more doable than it had been in the past? Because it seems to me that, that there was a lot of residential in the way there, wasn't it, John?
I thought it's already been bought out, I think.
Yeah, but, but prior to that, though, I think that was part of the problem, why we wanted it at a certain spot and they wanted it a little bit further south and...
Yeah, and that, and you're probably getting into the southern bridge corridor, even south of Fifty-Second. You can see, you know, this plan still leaves as a link to a potential bridge at either seventy-six, which would be county road sixty-seven, or Seventieth Avenue. You know, both of those, you know, Seventieth Avenue on the Fargo side no longer can connect all the way to I twenty-nine, so I mean, that really doesn't make itself a real positive corridor. Seventy-sixth is still possible, but, you know, with some of the buyouts the county has done down there, there's a number of HMG funds that have been used, so a lot of those lots are even restricted. So I think that really emphasizes the importance of Fifty-Second Avenue, Sixtieth Avenue, County twelve, as kind of that, at least over the next fifteen to twenty years, is gonna have to be that southern east-west corridor. And unfortunately, like Bill said, you know, we worked with MINDOT, you know, they're gonna widen out seventy-five next summer down to forty-six to a four-lane. We wanted to get them to constrain it in this plan down to, down to Sixtieth Avenue, but they just would not budge. But that is really the one missing piece then between now and two thousand and thirty to kind of complete that southern tier. Now, inevitably, you know, by two thousand and thirty, we're gonna have to widen seventy-five to the south. It's just, you know, this is the kind of game that MINDOT will play, is they're just not gonna allow us to put a project in the plan. It's MINDOT.
So the twelfth and fifteenth avenue north portion there, that, that is, I'm assuming that's categorized as a major, or going to be more of a major, assuming that we're gonna have a free and open bridge there, is that correct?
That's correct.
The anticipation is that toll would come off of that bridge and it would stay, the bridge would stay in operation.
Correct.
That's what gives us that criteria to make it, yeah. And it's, it's, I think it's right on.
Good. And, you know, like Bill mentioned, you know, we, I think we'll be able to commit to a kind of a countywide plan update in two thousand and sixteen, and that's when we can kind of start to take a look at some of those corridors like twelve and sixty-seven and fifty-two and ten. I mean, those are really, really important corridors for connecting, you know, you think a couple summers ago when, when MINDOT had the Buffalo River Bridges down on ninety-four, I mean, you saw traffic backing up on the weekends.
Yep.
So those corridors, you know, the downer exit, you know, all the way down to Barnesville, and then even that overpass on seventeen, you know, longer term preserving for potential interchange there, I think are all very important, you know, corridors for the county to keep an eye on.
So is it twelfth avenue south, the, the one that was targeted to go through Dilworth and then connect to three thirty-six?
Yeah, it's twelfth avenue is, is the dotted line there. You see, you can't really see it, it's Project Sixteen. I mean, again, we're still saying we need to preserve that corridor to extend it eventually.
Do we have an idea years out what we're looking at there?
I mean, my guess would be at sometime probably beyond two thousand and thirty.
Okay. I see a lot more and more activity on all along Thirty-Fourth there, and it's, and it, you just wonder how long it's gonna take, and it's just gonna just mushroom out.
Yeah.
Well, you were, you're float over your map earlier with, with planned expansion.
Really went out in that area, so you think...
Yeah, we're in that area, and of course, you know, you do have the, the county road that extends, I think it's at seventy-nine or seventy-seven, that's, you know, gravel. You know, that one would probably be improved before you would, you would punch twelfth avenue through, but, but nonetheless, I mean, that twelfth avenue extension, you know, is still a part of the mix. I just don't think we've seen the, the kind of development out there when we did some of the corridor management work two thousand and five, two thousand and six, but it's, you know, I think preservation is the key.
A lot of it was with Dilworth, too, because Dilworth seems to be right now, it's more north than it is south.
Yeah.
So that's, can maybe slow that down a little bit?
I, yes.
How about Twentieth Street? How soon is that supposed to be? They're talking this year to do some of their, and they extend, extension?
They'll take Twentieth Street, over the next two years, Twentieth Street will get down as far as Forty-third.
Forty-third.
And then what we're saying here is that, then again, before two thousand and twenty, trying to get it down to Fifty, sometime beyond, in the longer term, getting it all the way down to Sixtieth or Cassad twelve, or county road twelve. But that'll be a major improvement for Morehead because then that provides some relief to Highway seventy-five. And again, you know, the Twentieth Street interchange is one of those MINDOT projects that they wouldn't allow us to constrain, and we probably couldn't anyway. I mean, that's an expensive proposition to rebuild that full interchange, but inevitably, we're gonna need it, I mean, for access on that side of town to help, you know, putting that full interchange there is gonna take some pressure off of seventy-five.
But with the railroad next to it, it's the same problem we had in all the other places.
Yeah, it's, it's tight.
I used to serve on this board a few years ago, and I can't remember what we call it now, but it's, I, I used to go there, and we had Bob Zimmerman from the city was there, and we always met in Fergus Falls, and that's where we put together all the federal projects. Is that the STIP?
ATP.
ATP, that's A.T., ATP, yeah, there we go. So how, how much of this has to go through the ATP?
Well, we, I mean, our revenues get coordinated through the ATPs when we think about-
The federal-
The federal funds, correct.
Okay. So, and typically on the, the major projects, you line up the federal money first, and then we start looking at how we can fill in the, the regional, local money.
Correct.
And the state money. Okay.
In the short term, between now and two thousand and twenty, with the improvements that we've identified, it really doesn't look too bad out there, especially in Clay County. You pretty much see green, which is uncongested facilities. The orange, our facilities are starting to be congested, and the red show congested facilities. I can't read what that is, but yeah, I guess that's Twentieth, Twentieth Street, little bit of congestion there in Morehead, but as far as the county goes, it looks like we have a pretty good system out there.
Interstate and Highway seventy-five is the, is the worst congestion we've got.
Yeah, and we see that by two thousand and forty.
Right. In two thousand and forty, we build out all the projects that we have identified, and start seeing a little bit more red in the system. Yeah, US seventy-five south of town becomes congested, I ninety-four through Morehead becomes congested. We had no projects identified for the Red River Bridge on I ninety-four, so that starts to be congested as well.
And it, it sounds like, you know, both states understand that that bridge is probably, I mean, it's nineteen fifty-six is when that bridge, original structure went in, so both states are thinking around two thousand and thirty, the ninety-four bridge is gonna need to be replaced, and they agree on that. The, the rub will be, it looks like the model says we're gonna need to go to eight lanes over the Red River, so four in each direction, and I think both states understand the modeling realities, that that's just what we're gonna need. But this plan, we're not able to constrain it, so that's why when you look at the ninety-four, you see really that bottleneck from University all the way to Highway seventy-five, 'cause you got a lot of traffic trying to just use the, the six lanes that are there.
And as I mentioned earlier, we update the plan every five years, so seeing what we're seeing now, we can look at that a little bit more in depth when we update the plan in two thousand and nineteen. As I said before, the plan needs to be multimodal. In addition to street and highway projects, we also look at transit. This is what we see as a possibility for extending transit to the growth areas. The current system is in brown. What we expect to see by two thousand and twenty is in orange, and what we expect a full belt out of, of a possible transit system by two thousand and forty is identified in green. Bicycle network, a similar situation. We have a separate bicycling pedestrian plan that we drew from on this. Projects that you see in light green and the lightning stars represent the facilities and bridges that we identify that need to be addressed in the next five years. The darker green lines and stars are those improvements, and bridges that we see need to be identified over the next twenty years to provide connectivity within the region and provide a bicycle and pedestrian network to get you from point A to point B across the region. Again, we're here to present the plan to you, it's our final draft, but we're also looking for you to take action on it, to basically use this plan when considering projects in Clay County. This will be the guiding document for all federal projects, but we're also looking for your acceptance, adoption, or however you phrase it. There is a resolution in the packet that we're asking that the chair sign on behalf of the Clay County Board.
So in this planning process, you've, you've obviously, you've had Dave Olberbo from, from the Clay County side being involved with all of this, and, and I haven't heard anything from him that states that he, he's objects to any of these things that are here, and I know we've talked about it in our Highway Tracking Committee, and there's nothing that's been brought up, so, and again, this is, this is a plan, and it's always subject to, to change, you know, so it's not like by passing a resolution, we're, we're saying that we a hundred percent agree with everything here, because some, when you're going out as far as you are, there's things that can change, and, but they, I, I, you know, to agree in concept and to understand where, where our traffic patterns are in our growth areas are, it does become critical for us to do these things, and to make sure that we're letting the public know before the fact and not after the fact that we're gonna be dealing with major corridors. Last thing we wanna do is have some homes, homes brought in and, and private properties brought in to find out that, you know, a few years later, oh, we forgot to tell you we're gonna have a highway going in your backyard, you know, so, so this is good planning. And MetroCog, we've always, I've always felt you guys have done a really good job with that, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move Resolution two thousand and fourteen, twenty-nine, which says, "Now therefore, be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners does hereby adopt the Fargo-Morehead Area Long Range Transportation Plan Metro two thousand and forty and agrees to use it as a tool to implement metropolitan transportation goals and objectives which will complement overall development of the metropolitan transportation system."
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. And I just want to mention, too, we had Frank that was also involved with this, right, serving as our committee and...
Yep, and he is our chair this year, so he's keeping us on the line over there.
We should probably thank him for his work on this, even in his absence.
He's probably having some beer shits already about now, right?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item, and we're, we're actually just a couple minutes ahead of schedule here. Okay, our next item, we have a citizen's concern, safety and noise issues from recycling facility, and we have Patty Chiletto. Patty, come on up. Tim, you wanna go up and address?
I'm new to this all.
That's okay. We staffed a chair.
You're welcome.
What do I say?
You can, either one, you pick which one you want. Just make sure you talk into the-
Microphone.
One of those two microphones.
This is her.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'll be addressing.
Okay. Thank you.
If you have an extra time, you can.
Patty, do you have one more for the attorneys?
Sure. Also attached is the other permits from eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-one that were obtained.
Okay. All right. You have a floor, why don't you go?
Okay. I have photos here, too. It's two sets, but I'll just, okay. And we are located two miles north of Saban, so it is the southeast side of Morehead on Sixtieth Avenue, and after experiencing extremely disruptive noise from the site that is adjacent to our property, I decided to do some research, because over the past ten years or so, it's gotten, the noise and commotion over there has gotten increasingly worse. Originally, the operation was limited to three point ten acres, and it has outgrown that limit by a large amount, and we feel that it should be relocated to an area that can better accommodate the massive amounts of material that are being stockpiled there. The stockpiling is in violation of their permit from nineteen eighty-nine and ninety. I have copies of that, and nearly all of the conditions and limitations on the permits have been ignored for probably twenty-five years. First of all, the stockpiling material that is down there has been going on for more than twelve months. I estimate that some of that material's been down there for ten years or longer, and in visiting the recorder's office, they could not find any permits from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency or the Solid Waste Management Department. And so since nineteen ninety-one, there's been no permits. And then the next, the, there's, the roadway into the site is lined with demolition material and salvaged vehicles, and they were ordered to be removed as of August of nineteen ninety-one, and they are still there, and they're just inches from our property line. There were also no records found indicating that they were doing any quarterly reporting, so that's another concern. The next concern is their hours of operation. They're very excessive. They start at six a.m. in the morning and go until after nine o'clock at night, even on Saturday and Sundays. We just don't have any rest from, you know, the commotion and the noise. And the intensity of the noise is extreme, and it's way too close to a residential area. It's just unbearable. I tried to measure it out, but I'm not a surveyor, and I estimate that the crusher is approximately two hundred yards from our front door. A large concrete crusher. You can imagine the constant grinding and pounding, slamming, smashing, it's just unbearable, really. And it's devaluing our property, and we have fifteen acres, and we were a tree nursery, and so our property is very, normally, very peaceful and serene, and this is really interrupting our life. So some questions that we have is, why has this gotten so out of control? There, this operation apparently hasn't been monitored for the last twenty-five years, and aside from the recycling, the site has become a landfill, because the area where they used to excavate gravel was flooded, and all of the old material and vehicles and everything that were flooded are still in the water or on the edge of the water. And in going down there and observing the site, we found- And aside from the recycling, the site has become a landfill, because the area where they used to excavate gravel was flooded, and all of the old material and vehicles and everything that were flooded are still in the water or on the edge of the water. And in going down there and observing the site, we found tires, old plastic, empty oil drums, or maybe some of them had filling in them. They're all this old equipment that's just been left there. It's a regular landfill, really. I've contacted Joshua Burnman with the Minnesota Pollution Control, and he is investigating it, and I've sent him all these photos, plus more recent ones, because we observed the site about a week ago, and the amount of material that is there has tripled, the minimum of tripling, since last August. And the amount of truck traffic has increased, and a lot of the trucks are not Fitzgerald trucks. I don't know if he's subcontracting out, or, but huge, you know, side dumpster trucks, and it's, it's just really, it's gotten out of hand. I guess that's pretty much that for the business part, so in order for me to be assured that you understand the severity of this, I want to share something personal. I'm a caregiver, and, excuse me, and my husband has health issues, and so we've been trying to sell our property, and two buyers, you know, were turned off by this site next to our property. And last night, we had a third buyer that came out to the property, and he came, this was a return visit, and we really want this buyer to feel comfortable in buying this property of ours. And I want, and he wants me to give him, the realtor wants me to give him a call today after the meeting, so I'm wondering if you can give me any kind of reassurance that this situation can be resolved as quickly as possible. Do you have any questions?
Ma'am, I think you've made it very clear what the problem is. What's the legal status, where we're at on permit?
Well, I guess I ask Jenny, but we do have to talk to the property owner and resolve the permit issue. Last permit that was issued in 1991, and none of the permits were very specific about too much. At that time, they weren't recycling much material, so that's why the 12 months was thrown in there, just to bring it in, crush it, get it out. Nowadays, that doesn't necessarily work. If you've got a project for that material, you can move it. If you don't, then you're moving it for no reason at all. Permits from PCA and the Solid Waste Department, they have a recycling permit. From the Clay County Solid Waste Department have had one in the past. They get stickers for their trucks to show that they're recycling, carrying recyclable material every year. They have since this issue started back in 1989. One of the issues in particular that's created this problem is the fact that when it started, it was in the pit, 20 feet below grade. You couldn't tell they were there, let alone hear them. Once the water table and the buffalo aquifer started coming up, and the shelf in the pit that was used for mining and for stockpiling flooded, they pulled the operation out of the pit, and it's up on what would be the natural grade of the, in the area. So yes, the sound travels much further up there. They do have a lot of material out there. I stopped at the site last week. I asked a little, I asked the payload driver if he had any idea how much material they might have. His comment back to me was, once it's crushed, about 100,000 yards. They utilize that material in projects throughout the Fargo-Moorhead area as subbase for roadways, parking lots, and the like. There's never been hours of operation associated with any of these permits, days of operation, hours of operation associated with any of the three permits. So, that's nothing that we've ever controlled in the past. If the site wasn't flooded, it would still be utilized as a gravel mine, so there would still be the same type of traffic in and out of it. The driveway does run right down the adjacent property line with the Schelitos and Fitzgerald properties, so...
That is a private drive?
It's a private drive, yeah. I did speak with Brad Fitzgerald. In fact, he is in the audience today, the operator, owner and operator of the site. And the material that's parked along the roadways, he said that that, that he can deal with to remove that, try and clean that up. But I guess Jenny and I are going to have to sit down and determine what direction we go with the permit. The whole issue started back in 1988 as an illegal dumping violation for solid waste, and in the three years after that, you know, it was permitted three times to do concrete recycling, and I guess we hadn't, up until now, we've had few, if any, comments and complaints. Mr. Schelito did talk to me last summer, but prior to that, we've had very few, if any, comments or complaints about it.
Well, I, you know, I think it's, I think it would probably be a good thing, Tim, for you to talk with Jenny. And, you know, we've got a, we've got a situation here where, you know, speaking truthfully here, we've got, we've got a business that's, that is providing very important materials to an awful lot of projects that go on in our region, whether it's in the Clay County side or Cass County side. But along with that, we need to respect our neighbors, and I, you know, and I think, you know, what had transpired years ago and what's transpiring today, I would certainly hope that by Tim, you and Jenny monitoring this document and working with Brad, I know, I know Brad, I know Brad's a reasonable man, I, you know, I would think that maybe you can come to some sort of a better understanding, and, and you know what, and just, just like the racetrack issue that took place out on Highway 10, you know, maybe we need to be fair and talk about what are appropriate hours of operation where you can have a business still do what they need to do, but yet the people who depend on that is their livelihood and their living to be able to live in somewhat peace at times. So, I think that's a good first step for us to give you an answer, but for your realtor today, as far as what will happen, that's really, that's really hard to say, other than the fact that you have clearly brought up some things in here that, that we need to have addressed that's within the permits themselves, so...
And I really feel, I mean, that it's outgrown. The operation has outgrown the spaces there, and I really think that, you know, another area would better accommodate what's going on, and it would be, I think, a better business practice, and for everyone, even Brad, concerned if he, you know, if there's some way that he could relocate this operation, because I'm sure when it started, it was, you know, fairly small, and now that's grown to, you know, it's a heavy industrial operation. It shouldn't be out there in a residential agricultural area. It should be relocated, and I really believe that.
Yeah, well, I think that you pointed out some very important points that we need to, and that's primarily why many of our permits nowadays have some time end items that we can go back and reevaluate, and back in 91, that wasn't the case. So it's a case of a program that's, that permits never ended, because it's been continuously used all the time, and we need to figure out how we deal with that. So I, I think that you have every right to have a peace and quiet in your, in your life, and we need, need to find a way to correct the problem and, and still make it, you know, so that the industry is not curtailed in their, in their ability to do what they need to do to make a living as well.
Oh, yeah. I'm all for recycling. I think it's a great thing. I do. Recycling concrete is, you know, a very noble thing that he's doing, but he's doing it in the wrong location.
Yeah.
It really is a heavy industrial operation.
Right, I understand that.
If you don't believe me, go visit it.
No, I understand that, and you've made it very clear. I'm not sure how many years ago, the issue primarily for your tree farm was the dust, and we did manage to get that segment of road tarred so that it, we took care of that dust problem, at least from the, from the county road. I'm sure there's still dust coming from the driveway going in, but, but at that time, I don't remember any concerns expressed about the noise issue, and evidently, like you said, that's changed over the last few years and has increased, and we need to, need to address it. I'm not sure Jenny will have to explain to us legally how we can, how we can address the issue.
How does that permit, is it just ongoing, or...
Well, it's a conditional use permit, so it runs with the property, and technically, as long as conditions are met, it's valid. Conditions here, you know, it's a matter of, the permit could be considered invalid probably because most of the conditions aren't being met the way they were initially or originally laid out.
All right, well, Tim, I think we've got to, we've got to knock this back into your court here for a little bit.
Oh, I kind of figured it was coming this way.
But I think between you and Jenny, I think we need to review this. Hopefully, you'll get an opportunity to sit down with the Fitzgeralds as well, and, you know, if we can find a good way to make it better for both of you, then, then that would be the ideal situation, and stay within the regulations that were originally designed through the permits.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that we're going to have to redesign a permit.
And so redesigning that, then, does that then bring the whole Planning Commission back into play?
Yep.
Okay. So ultimately, this looks like this is headed back to the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's where we're going?
So is there any possibility of them relocating?
Relocation would be a fine thing. They own a substantial amount of property right there. Aside from the pit, they own an adjacent property to the east, one to the northwest. You know, if, I have no idea whether they own property anywhere else that could be utilized for this, that's in any better location, you know, relative to...
You just, you might end up going to another place where you have new residential people who are going to have the same...
So I guess I don't know what that possibility is. That's something that through the process, it needs to be discussed.
Does he want to comment, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Brad, did you want to make any comments?
I would, I would.
Sure, come on up. You can, if you want to use the podium there, you can do that too, Brad, whatever.
I guess I wasn't really prepared for this much, but the only thing I can say is, you know, we try to accommodate and be good neighbors. We're not here to irritate people. We work from about 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. We try not to work weekends, but we do occasionally work a Saturday, because it rains, it's, you know, time of year. So we try not to be, we try to get along with our neighbors, you know? The dust control our road and stuff like that to help, so the dust, you know? And, you know, the other part I've got to bring up is, the pit's been there since early 1900s. Everybody built around us. You know, we were out in the middle of nowhere. And granted, we have, we used to crush in the bottom of the pit. The water has come up with the aquifer, so we had to go up top and do it. But we crushed, we've been crushing in that pit for 60 years. I mean, it's not that a crusher is a new thing in the area. You know, my father crushed in the pit. I mean, so it's not that a crusher is a new item to this location. You know, like I said, the pit has been there 100 years, I'm guessing, so, you know, there's probably one original farmstead that's across the road that otherwise people have built around it, knowing the circumstances that it was a gravel pit. As a matter of fact, when I grew up, we ran everything out of that pit, all of our trucks. We crushed, we screened. That was where everything, now it's just mainly, we crush concrete. I mean, it's, we don't mine anywhere out of there, but it is still a very big part of our business. I'd hate to lose it, and to relocate it, I don't know where you're going, as he brought up, you're going to be close to somebody who's going to just say this, you know, you're going to bring up the same issue, is what I'm afraid of, you know? And I don't know how you're, so...
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah.
Our property was a homestead and was, has been there for over 100 years as well, as well as the one across the street. And they do start at 6:00 in the morning and go until after 9:00 at night. It's not a 7 to 6 operation. Just to give you an insight. I live there, and I know.
All right, well, Jim, let's, we've got you on this, and you and Jenny, we can research and see what our options are, and I'm guessing that this is going to ultimately find its way back to the Planning Commission for consideration of the permits.
Yep.
Definitely.
Thank you for coming.
Good morning, Georgia. Good morning.
You are here today to request a full-time custodian position that's, we evidently had a resignation?
Yep, we had a resignation from one of the courthouse full-time employees, and we're requesting authorization to fill the full-time position.
And I see you've done your stuff here, and Darren's been involved with the...
Yep.
...members and, okay?
It would reduce the savings, assuming we replace the starting person on the first step of the grade. It would be approximately $7,000 saving, annual savings if we were to fill the position at the lower rate.
And so you're looking at anyone from, anywhere from...
1368, I believe, is the starting.
Okay, because it goes to eight, or is it one to three we can take, right?
Mr. Chair, I move that we give Georgia the right to replace this full-time custodial position, and do it as soon as she can.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I don't know, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. There you go, Georgia.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? May I say this at this time, too? It seems to me that the complaints about the cleanliness have really reduced. I mean, we're utilizing a lot of roster people and things, and I think she's put a lot of hours into the building of cleaning, and I think it's really helped. They have a part-time person in the day over at Family Service Center, and it's been through Georgia and Robbie's efforts to, to try to put more hours on the floors, and I think that's really been good.
Very good. Dave?
Good morning, Dave. Good morning.
We have a couple of things for us today. We want to approve the construction agreement resolution for the Barnesville Safe Roads to School project.
Yeah, this is the agreement with MINDOT. Being that we're the sponsor, we are required to sign this agency agreement, and this one in particular is for construction engineering. A few months ago, we had one with the city of Dilworth, and that was for advanced constructing, because they're spending their own funds this year in getting their Safe Roads to School monies in FY '15. So it's real similar. They come in these little blue binders. There's about nine or 10 pages, and I went through this one really good, because I wanted to make sure, you know, sometimes being a sponsor of these things, it's pretty easy to just kind of let someone else take care of it and sit on the back burner, but we've been caught a few times in the last 10 years on that, because there's, essentially, the way the state looks at it is, this is our project. But the way, in reality, the city of Barnesville has hired KLG, Kiermais Land Jackson, to do their consulting, so they're pretty much running the thing, but we're overseeing it. So I spent a lot of time going through this. I also visited with Jenny on it, just to make sure there wasn't some requirements that were missing. In addition, last week, I met with some of the MINDOT folks, just to double check that we're doing everything, and it says we need a licensed engineer overseeing the project. We're doing that. It says that they need to do some additional requirements for consulting work, and they've got a form, a PIF form, that's been done already. So according to the state, everything in this agreement is good, so basically, it needs to be in place in order to use federal funds for construction engineering, and that's, that's kind of the gist of it. They got $20,920 for construction engineering, and that's, this is kind of the paperwork that allows those federal funds for construction engineering for the city of Barnesville.
All right. I'll move to approve. Second. We only have two to work with here.
That's right, that's right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And obviously, these, these Safe Roads to Schools have always been, are always really good projects to move forward.
It's nice. They're 100%, I believe, too, I believe, versus like the TE grounds were 80/20, so it's, it's a good deal for the cities.
All right, and it's good... All right, and it's good that you're willing to take on the role in that. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Motion carried. The next item is recommendations to approve motor vehicle department quotes for paving project.
Brian asked us to kind of help out with this a little bit, so we did some work, some surveying work. We drew up a little set of plans and we took some quotes last week. They came in a little higher than we had hoped, but it's a real small project and we had an extremely tight timeline to get this done. The good thing was, we did get two quotes and they are within our timeline. So we believe by the time the remodel work is done, the parking lot work will get done as well. We're improving drainage out there. We're actually, right around the outside of the building where you walk in, we're gonna be able to raise that up about six inches. If you look right now, as you come out of the existing, it comes down, so we're gonna raise that up fairly flat. So that way, there's six more inches of drop to get down to the, as it drains out through the street there, through that entrance. So it's gonna help out quite a bit. Our plan is basically to mill a little swale from the existing building out to the center and then from kind of the north side as well. So both areas will drain out quite well. Right now, there's a couple of bird baths out there when it rains, so this should help quite a bit. I don't know if you guys, did everybody get a copy of the abstract there? The epoxy striping came in quite high, almost seven, you know, sixty-seven hundred dollars. We didn't think that was very good, a very good buy, so they'd be willing to do the exact same striping for seven, for nine hundred dollars. So as well as the bollard options, I guess, that was for some stainless steel kind of protection so that somebody wouldn't go through and bump into the building. Right now, there is parking right in front of the building. That's not gonna be that way in the future. It's gonna be parking more north and south. So there'll be a couple of dedicated handicap spots and they'll be, as you drive into there, you'll be turning back south and parking along that area and there'll be nothing right in front of the building, so.
But if you're parking north, you'd be parking right up against the.
No, they'll angle into the south, Mr. Chair, and then they back out. So they will park against the building.
Our plan is still to have a couple of.
You're gonna have one row of cars.
Yep, one row of cars facing south and then the rest will be along the fence going north and south there on that far side. So we laid out the parking as best as we could and we didn't lose too many spots. I think it's gonna actually work out, work out pretty good. There's still a fair amount of people that park on the street as well. We're adding some sidewalk in front of those cars that would park there on kind of the south side of that parking lot. So as you get out, you'll be able to walk sidewalk all the way around, which will be kind of nice.
How far are we gonna go north around the building?
This to the existing, what's there. Yeah, we weren't gonna add any additional asphalt.
Okay, because it's just a million of them.
Yeah, I think our long-term plans might be to look at additional paving around possibly all the way to the north to that other shed and then, you know, maybe something on the west side as well, but that's to be determined. But I think, you know, with a little more time, we can probably get a little better price on this. I think the county probably would do some of that, you know, some base work. That would be another thing that we could save some money on. Our guys can do that. We've got gravel, we've laid fabric down. So in the future, we would maybe dig a lot of that out of there, put a new gravel base in there and then we could sub out the asphalt paving, but, you know, maybe that's a project down the road.
Hey, but you're keeping a lot cleaner, the parking lot, if you didn't have the gravel behind it.
True, we're hoping there's not a lot of traffic, but I suppose there will still be some of the buses and things that use the existing building, but.
And are we gonna be able to move the testing parking lots that are parking spots that have been, you know, restricted, people couldn't, didn't think they could park there? Can they be moved to the east, to the west side of the building, for instance, or?
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we should consider that because it's, picks up prime parking spots in that corner and even though they are allowed to park on Monday and Tuesday when the testing aren't going on, a lot of people hesitate because it says no parking and then it says Monday. So, yeah, I think we need to look at that. I think we need to consider that.
I had thought there would be room for diagonal parking on both sides coming in towards the office, but evidently, there's not.
Yeah, pretty tight to do that, do that movement.
And we did, Mr. Chair, also check out that exit that you had suggested and that was not allowed by the city.
Correct, yeah, doesn't meet the access requirements for the city, the spacings.
What was your estimate?
It was, I think it was like around thirty-five thousand somewhere. So like I said, it was quite a bit higher. A couple of things happened with our estimate is, we do a lot of road, you know, long five, four, five mile projects and I think our milling number was low. The asphalt number that we used was eighty-five dollars a ton and I think it came in here at a hundred and twenty-five, but the number we got for the L E C out here a couple of years ago was seventy-five. So we bumped that up to eighty-five and it came in at one twenty-five. So that was probably our biggest number that was different from the bids, as well as the, I think the milling, come in at fourteen thirty a square yard for milling. We used, I think it was a couple of dollars.
Is that because it's a smaller project?
I think, that small project and the timeline, you know, they're gonna, our timeline for this thing was June thirteenth.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it needs to be.
Yeah, exactly, yep, yep.
So Brian, in the grand scope of this project here, it comes back to the dollars. Did we, did we have dollars in this?
What we had planned for was sixty thousand dollars for the parking lot. We didn't know how much we would get done for that, but this is to resurface. And this also, though, includes the sidewalks, as Dave said, and the curb and gutter that comes around there. So when he told me it was fifty thousand dollars, I said, he said it came a little high and I said, oh, boy, I thought that was pretty good, considering the smaller project and all of the concrete work. And when Dave said they helped us out a little bit, they were kind of lifesavers on this. They really took the ball and, because the sloping was important that they had to deal with, to get the water away from the building and things. So they've done a, done a very good job working this up.
So with the add-ons that we did with, to date, with the normal construction project itself and this bid, are we still within our project price?
We're gonna still be okay, yes.
Are we gonna, are we gonna still be within our project price?
I would say yes, because we hit the bid and now we've had some changes. You know, we've had about fifteen thousand dollars, we changed that floor covering and things, but all along, we figured about sixty thousand dollars for the parking lot.
Thanks, Brad. Second. And we are approved, which, is that Northern?
Yeah, Northern Improvement Bid and it's fifty thousand, four sixty-two twenty-five.
A motion is to approve Northern Improvement Bid in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. Motion carried. Very good. Dave, you got anything else for us today?
I do not.
Mr. Chair, do you want official action on that resolution for that? Parking, I know you passed a motion on it, but did you pass the resolution? You did, okay, we're good. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, we're gonna take a break. Just five minutes, we'll be back. All right, well, we convene our meeting here. It's, we're running a little bit behind here, which is okay. And our next item is the dealing with solid waste and we have Kurt Rosenberger here. Kurt, welcome.
Thank you much.
We have a couple of different things and the first one, and if you don't mind, I'm just gonna start off just a little bit and a brief history on this. The Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Authority, John and I both serve on the SWAC committee, which is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which has several members throughout the county from cities and private residents to try to, you know, monitor and give guidance to those of you who run our solid waste department. And one of the real exciting things that have come up over many years, we've tried to get a go-to regional approach to solid waste. Clay County hosted here a while back and I served as chair on that one. We even were looking at going together with Fargo. We even had Grand Forks down here and we had a number of counties very interested in, and obviously, it was just way before its time. But what is interesting now is we have this group of four counties that are currently, that currently established, the Prairie Lakes, and they have an incinerator that they use for a lot of their, their solid waste. And they've invited us or they wanted to know if we would be able to incorporate some of their fines and I'll maybe refer to the technical stuff to you moving forward and how that's all explained. But in cooperation with that, we discussed with them about the possibility of becoming another county partner in the project. And within our solid waste fund, we have the dollars already in place to invest in and become a partner. And so what Kurt is gonna be going over today is kind of the bullet points that over a couple of years' time, we have come up with a plan and hopefully Prairie Lakes will agree to what we're proposing here and we would become a fifteen percent member in Prairie Lakes and become a voting member. And that was all critical to us. If we were going to be investing into that, we also wanted to be a voting member. And I think overall, this is a, it's a really good step. Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, they've also been strong supporters of trying to deal with regional concepts and I think we're, this is an opportunity for us to really get on the way there. So I've kind of laid it out for you, Kurt. Now you can get into the.
Well, you can pass the motion now.
Well, we are gonna pass.
Actually, and I think it's, this is really a pretty big deal. I think that Clay County's worked on this for many, many, many years and this is pretty significant. And, you know, this is not, as I've talked to you all about from time to time, this is not a perfect agreement, but it's pretty darn fair to everybody. I think it's fair to Prairie Lakes and I think it's extremely fair to Clay County. So I think what I'd like to do is just walk through the agreement very quickly and that way, folks can understand where we're at. Essentially, what, just so you all understand, what I'm asking for today is just the authority to finalize the agreement. Prairie Lakes has to also agree to the terms that we were talking about and at that point in time, then we'll formalize it and we'll come back and talk to you again.
Yeah, what he's proposing here is basically our proposal to them, the talking points in terms of joining. It's not a hundred percent certain that they accept, will accept the exact language here, but this is the first step in that process.
Exactly, and, you know, the talking points or the term sheet, if you will, came about by discussion with Mike Keenan, who's the executive director, and myself. We've talked for, you know, probably two or three months. I told Brian that I was gonna get this done in two weeks and six weeks later, here I am. So I'm a little late, but I'm doing the best I can. At any rate, the agreed upon assumptions that we have, Prairie Lakes has a capacity at their facility of sixty-two thousand tons per year. And currently, there's four counties, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, there Wadena, Todd, Becker, and Ottertail County. And those four counties, they contributed one point three million dollars to the project since Ottertail decided to take over the project. The draft terms of the agreement between Prairie Lakes and Clay County, again, the fifteen percent is critical. We want to be a partner, a full voting participant. In order to do that, we basically took fifteen percent of the one point three million dollars that has currently been spent by the other colonies in the partnership. That works out to about a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. So in order to actually be a voting partner, we have to pay one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. As a result of that, Prairie Lakes will guarantee fifteen percent capacity for the Clay County, for Clay County at their facility. And that's actually a typo, it should be ninety-three hundred instead of ninety-four hundred. So that's what they're gonna guarantee that we can take over there as far as waste. As part of the agreement, Clay County will guarantee delivery of ninety-three hundred tons a year of solid waste to Prairie Lakes for processing. For the first six thousand tons delivered, Clay County will only be responsible for the transportation cost. And we estimate the transportation cost to be about twenty, twenty-two bucks a ton. Hopefully, the gas prices and diesel prices will stay low. That's the one area that will go up, but we're aware of that. For the remainder of the solid waste, and we can take up to a maximum of eleven thousand tons on an annual basis, but for the next, basically thirty-three hundred tons, we pay transportation cost and their tipping fee. And their tipping fee is eighty-four bucks a ton at the current time. Prairie Lakes, on the other hand, will guarantee delivery of six thousand tons of fines to the Clay County landfill. And fines basically are, they have a material recovery facility and essentially, in the material recovery facility, it takes material to be recycled from the waste stream. And the fines are the material that can't be burned, it's things like bottle caps and grit and sand. They're getting a lot of organics as well, but we're gonna be taking the fines, six thousand tons, they were guaranteed to us and they will pay no tipping fee for those six thousand tons, but they'll pay the transportation cost for those fines.
So if I can, right there, on those fines, one of the uses that we hope to be able to use for that would be for daily cover. For those who may be watching us on TV, that's another important component because that daily cover, we have to have something to put over that that helps reduce the blowing of garbage into neighboring fields and so on and so forth. So it's something that, it's part of our maintenance deal, but if we don't have it this way, we have to get it somehow, which means we may have to buy it.
We'll have to pay for it, right.
So this, in a way, then also becomes another positive to us in terms of now we've worked it into this agreement. It's part of something we no longer have to pay for, but yet it's a material that we would have to buy if we didn't have it, so.
Very much so, it's a really positive thing. And then, as I said, for the first six thousand tons delivered, they will not pay a tipping fee. They'll pay the transportation and cost, but they won't pay a tipping fee. For the remainder of the fines, and again, we put a maximum of eleven thousand tons per year. I don't think they'll get that close, but they may. If they do, that's good for us. But they would pay a tipping fee that's posted at the gate. And our tipping fee, I hope, I'll come back to you at some point in time. I hope to raise the tipping fee here later in the year, once we get our scale in place and we'll deal with that issue at that point in time. The final one is something that in talking to Commissioner Everett and Campbell was really pretty critical for them. During downtime or in cases of overcapacity, if they have more capacity at Prairie Lake facility, then what they can process, waste will be diverted to Clay County landfill. And since it's mixed municipal solid waste and since it's out of county waste, we're gonna charge them a premium tipping fee. And the tipping fee will be approximately fifty-seven dollars a ton. In addition, there was concern that we set a maximum amount of material that we would take in and we have set a maximum amount of material at five thousand tons per year. So that's essentially the agreement. As I said, I don't think it's a perfect agreement, but I think it's pretty darn good and I'm pretty pleased that we've gotten to this point.
You've done a nice job with it, Kirk.
Thank you.
Going back to that last bullet point, I think one of the, one of the critical components that John and I were so concerned about is, is going into this agreement with this multi-county deal, it also has to make sense. So when you, when you go and you invest the dollars that we're investing in it, that investment has to make sense from another standpoint. And what we're talking about in this whole process was by doing this, it's also gonna increase the life of our landfill. And I think the residents of Clay County need to know that one of the most expensive areas to deal with is try to expand the landfill. It's very, very, very costly. And so if we can reduce or lengthen the amount of time before we would ever have to expand our landfill, it's saving the county an awful lot of money. So it had to make sense in that fashion and that was also part of the reason why we have that limitation in there on those five thousand tons over and above, because otherwise, we would, you know, we're starting to lose, we would start to lose that advantage of lengthening the life of our landfill.
Right.
So in the grand scheme of things, the whole project, you had to take all of those things into consideration about how many tons is right and trading and the cost. And I know John must talk, but one other thing here, the only thing that I don't like about this language in here, and it goes to my experience when we have fees associated with something, and it seems like we're talking too much in short term. This doesn't address what would this be, what would these, what would these fees be fifteen years from now? It's almost best if you can incorporate some language that changes as. This doesn't address what would this be, what would these, what would these fees be fifteen years from now? It, it's almost best if you can incorporate some, some language that changes as the fees change.
I understand and that certainly will be included in that. I understand. So, and I think, you know, and again, just, excuse me, just, just, you know, so you're aware, I mean, it's, it's on both sides.
Right.
You know, I think that that's something actually Mike and I have talked about, how, how the fees will, will increase and how they will affect us long-term. So that, that definitely will be part of the final.
Yeah, I just, I just think rather than specify, you know, right now in this deal, we have currently eighty-four dollars a ton. Over here, we're currently, we have a tipping fee of fifty-seven dollars a ton. I think we need to replace that language with something that ties to something more permanent.
Okay. Something like the tipping fee? I could just-
Well, I mean, if, as tipping fees change, we shouldn't have to go back and amend this fifty-seven dollars.
No, no, I agree. I agree. And, and I would hope that we have that in the final agreement.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so if you can do that, I, the rest, I, there's been a lot of work put on this and, and I know John and I have been doing that for a long time and you've been hard on it since you came on board and, and this, this is kind of exciting stuff.
I agree.
It's hard to get excited about talking about garbage.
Come on, that's, that's my life. We're having a different life.
But in, but in terms of, of what it does financially to the county, it's a, this is a pretty good thing for us.
It's very positive. There's, there's no doubt about it.
John?
Yeah, the advantage, of course, is that in order to make this work, we have to put in a scale so that we can weigh, we can be handling tons rather than yards because the, the fines are a lot heavier than the normal garbage flow and so we gain, even that six thousand equal tonnage, we gain in space considerably in that because it takes, it's much more, it's easier. It takes less space than the garbage would.
Right. The fines, as far as the, the compaction rate of the, the fines are, are much better than, than mixed waste. That's another reason why the, the tipping fee for the, the mixed waste is higher.
And we did visit the, the whole planning commission, visited the-
Actually, it was a solid waste.
The site in perm and we were all very impressed with, with it. So I, I think it's a good thing to be connected with and, and I think this will help us into the future considerably.
I think one of the things too, just, you know, to, you know, build on that statement, I, you know, it's something that I think that, you know, the city of Morehead and Clay County should be looking at and I think we are going to be looking at kind of a joint transfer station, MRF ourselves. You know, I've talked to the public works director from city of Morehead and they're very excited about that and I think that that's something that I will be coming back and talking to you about here in the near future, some kind of a joint for between the city and us.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a second too. I want to touch base with that. So you're looking today for a resolution from the board or motion from the board-
Motion just to authorize-
That, that, that says we agree with these talking points to move forward.
Right, with the exception that you want to have the-
You know, the, there's things that would need to be amended. You know what they are.
I would move that we authorize the development of, of the membership agreements as discussed.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, it's the same motion carried. I want just briefly another issue on this that to bring Commissioner Wayland and, and if the other members were here, but we had, through the SWAC committee and through your guidance since you've been here, we've been, we had been talking about the need for, potentially a need for a new transfer station here locally. For those of you who are in the, in the Morehead area, the transfer station that's out on Highway ten, it currently does, does not fit in terms of the ability to load the waste that we want to load into the type of capacity that we want to load it to send to perm for this project. The, the good news recently that, and I believe I got that good news from you, was that, that rather than going and constructing an entirely new facility that, that Morehead is very open to and they believe that we can maybe make some modifications to that current plant to do this and I-
That's what I've been led to believe.
Well, no, but I, I'm, I'm going to follow down that path.
So am I, so am I. I'm going down the same path.
Because it makes a lot, it does make a lot of sense, provided, that, provided that we can do it and it's in an okay place there where it's at, so. But I just, again, that was just another, another thing that I'm glad to see that you didn't waste much time once you started working here and getting involved in some pretty big projects, so.
We've, we've got a lot to do. I mean, there still is a lot to do and I, you know, I can't do it myself. I think Solid Waste Advisory Committee has, you know, done a really, really good job helping me and certainly you guys have been really supportive as well and I really appreciate that, but we do want some-
We might push a little.
Well, we're going, we're going to continue to push, but, you know, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to need your help as, as we move forward, so thank you in advance.
All right. So we have one more thing and this is, this is another one of your initiatives that you want to-
Well, it's, it's, it's not, you know, I mean, our partners, our future partners, Todd, Wadena, Ottertail and Becker County are currently doing this right now. They're all in the process.
So I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on today?
Okay.
Because I, because I think what you're looking for is just the-
Begin the solid, or the designation plan.
Yeah, so, so we're going on now to the authorization to begin waste designation process and, and I think maybe if you can kind of give, you, you did provide all of the board members with a little background information and that's some pros and cons on there, which I had asked you to do.
Right.
Where I, I thought that was, well written. So maybe if you can just, because we are running a little bit behind.
I'll give you, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I know there to talk a little bit. I'll give you a Reader's Digest version.
Give us a short.
Essentially what it is, is that it's formalizing what you guys are already doing or you think you're doing. Through your license, you think you're getting all your waste from Clay County to be disposed at either a transfer station or a landfill. That's not really the case legally. If somebody challenged you, that would not stand up in court. What we're doing instead is we're giving you the vehicle to, to actually be able to do what you've been trying to do for the last twenty-five, thirty years and that's waste designation. And it's a very, very extended process. You're going to get a couple of bites of the apple. We have to do a designation plan. Once the designation plan is done, you have to approve it, you'll get a chance to take a bite at it then. After that, we have PCA approves the, the designation plan. We have a public hearing. We begin contract negotiations with the waste haulers. At that point in time, a designation ordinance is passed, we'll come back to you again and you'll have another bite at the apple at that point in time. So it's going to take an extended period of time. If there's a period of time when you aren't comfortable with what we're doing, you know, you can bail out at that point in time. But this is something that's pretty positive for the county. It really helps manage your risk in a, in a rope houses sort of way. You may hear from some of your waste haulers, some of the smaller guys don't really understand the process and they may get upset about it, but it's, it's good for them as well.
Yeah, I, I certainly, I certainly don't have a problem with, with moving forward with it. But like I said, it, this is one of these deals where until you clearly hear all sides of the story, whether it's, whether it's coming from the haulers themselves or, or how, how would, might this change the way the city of Morehead or the city of Barnesville or the city of Holly might do things? I don't know if it, if there are any changes in the way-
City of Morehead is very supportive of it. There's another law, it's called a public entity law and essentially the cities have to do what the county sought.
Well, I know they have to do what the county wants, but they don't always like what the county does.
No, that's exactly, that's exactly true.
So, so we, you know, we like to coordinate and work with them too, so.
I would move that we authorize to begin the process of designation, designation process.
All right.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. So how is that Reader's Digest version, too long or was the Reader's Digest version too long and boring?
Very good. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
Have a good weekend.
You too. No more hockey, huh?
No, basketball either.
Well, I don't care about basketball. Oh, did I say that? Okay, what have we got next here? Okay, now we're going to have our, we're going to go to our agenda edition.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public meeting and enter into closed session.
Hang on a second. I'm not so sure we need to do it yet. I first want to get some comments from Brian.
Okay, friend.
Yeah, so there, there may need to be a reason for us to go into closed session, but I, I just, before we do that, I want Brian to give us an update on where we are.
And thank you for taking the time to add this to the agenda today. It's something that involves a lot of money and it, and I almost apologize ahead of time, I think I should apologize ahead of time, that this has been a little stormy road for us to, to go down, but it's a topic that we don't know a whole lot about and fixing elevators and so there's been some bumps in the roadway here. What I handed out to you is a memo that, and, and just kind of outlined that, on April twenty-second, the board opened bids for the above-mentioned project, meaning the family service center elevator modernization project. Gas Construction submitted a bid for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. There was no alternate that was requested in the bids. Dyson Krupp had submitted a bid through GAST, which included an alternate deduct of forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. If the two hoist machines were not replaced, action was delayed as we asked Dyson Krupp's to appear at the May thirteenth board meeting. And, and I know you folks remember that you thought forty-four thousand dollars was not a very large deduct for the type of operation it needed to be. They talked about possibly removing a section of the roof, using a hoist and all those kinds of things. So they, they appeared here then to explain why the machines did not need to be replaced and they stated, and this is a quote, that the machine that you have right now, it was put in in nineteen ninety-two, we think. So I know it was my belief sitting over there that day and I'm sure it was your board members that that was replaced in nineteen ninety-two. And they said that the technology has not changed a great deal since then. So we moved forward and, and I feel a little guilty here because, Mr. Chair, you asked me specifically, are you comfortable with this? And I said, well, yes, with these responses, I'm comfortable and you said you are too and, and it moved forward. Well, on Friday, May sixteenth, it was just last Friday, and it's why we had to add the addition, because we sent out the agendas on, on Thursday. I met with representatives from Otis Elevator Company and Otis Elevator has been servicing our equipment for years and state the machines are nineteen fifty models. And I guess that concerns me, just in layman's thought is that, you know, wells rust, wells go bad, maybe that's not an issue. I don't know the integral workings of that, but it just seems like something that was put in in nineteen fifty. It may not be a bad idea for that kind of money to change those out. And they said that if we don't replace those machines, that we're going to have, our problems are going to continue. Again, I'm not the expert in it, they have been servicing it, so it raised a red flag for me. So I've discussed this with Jenny and we would like to bring this forward to the board today for further discussion on it. And I, you do have also a second piece of paper in front of you and it basically states what I stated in the memo. We could go through that too, but I have conversed with Mr. Michael Burns, the architect who we employed to write the specs for the elevator replacement. I'm not sure he necessarily share, he doesn't share our concerns necessarily to that degree. He has suggested that maybe we should, you know, go forward with the project and if we determine then that the, the machines do need to be replaced, that we make some adjustment at that time. I don't know that that's the right answer. I, I do think we have some, some concerns as to how far this goes forward without making a solid commitment. I mean, we made a commitment last week. We haven't signed a contract yet on it, but we made a commitment from the board and that's why this, this meeting needed to take place today because we don't want people to incur costs based on board action. But we feel that there's new, I'll say, evidence here or, or circumstances. And frankly, I did explain to Otis Elevators when they were in that, you know, I know that there is a financial interest on everybody's part here and, and let's hope these are not done for financial means, but we know that, that drives things too. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at, you know, what I know about it.
Well, Brian, I, I, I share some concern here with the motion that was made and now in light of that, having a little bit different information and Jenny, I want to ask you, it's not very often and it's for specific reasons where we can go into executive session and I, I really believe that, that this could be one of those situations and I just want to make sure that before we go into an executive session, that, that you're, you'd be okay with it. I, I, you know, we, we had passed a resolution and in light of new information, I, I think we need to discuss this in executive session. Are you okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the board can retire into executive session for purposes of legal discussions. That would be protected by attorney-client privilege, so if that's what the board wishes to do, if you want some discussion and legal advice, I would encourage the board to do it in that way.
And I, I believe that's what we should be doing.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move to close the public meeting and enter into closed session to discuss legal options as covered by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Typically when we go into closed session, we ask everybody to leave the room here and then we let you know when it's done. Because there's a few of us today and there's more of you out there, if you want to stay around, we're going to just retire back into, into Brian's office and then we'll come back in as soon as, as soon as we're done, so. All right, well, we convene our meeting. It is now ten eighteen.
We have to move to get out of-
Oh, yeah.
I'll move if we open the session.
We have a motion in the second to reconvene and open the session. Okay, we have the return from closed session in regards to an item dealing with the family service center elevator modernization project. And in light of recent developments, when we had the vendors before us at our last meeting and talking about this project, we, we had made a, a motion to move forward based on issues that were presented to us and, and one of the critical issues there to us was the age of, of equipment. And in light of current information, it is clear that there is a discrepancy on the age of equipment with, being equipment from the nineteen nineties to the nineteen fifties is, is pretty significant difference in age. And had I, had I known, as a voting member of this, had I known that, that it truly was more of the nineteen fifties model, it certainly would have changed my, my thoughts on, on how we're moving forward with this project. So, and I, you know, so in closed session, we've talked about it and I think the other commissioners agree with this, but, and again, we're, we're in open session now and each of them are going to have to, to decide on their own, but based on our county attorney's discussion and opinion with this, it would be my recommendation that we would rescind the previous motion authorizing this project to move forward.
I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Jenny, is there anything else we need within that?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. So that motion is rescinded and that puts us back to what, what all options we did have, including to, you know, take the project in its entirety or we would also have the ability to reject any and all bids until we could, if we so choose, until we actually have correct data that we can make good decisions on. So, I mean, there, there's basically two options that we have there, so it's what you guys think is-
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reject the, the bids we received and start the process over again with, with the information that we need to gain before then.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Jenny, is that motion meet?
It is sufficient, yes.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose the same, motion carried. And, you know, for, for those of you out there, this issue is just one where we just want to, in our minds, be really confident in, in what we're dealing here with. The crucial component to us was, was this age issue and there, you know, there was some discrepancies- discrepancies on that, and, and when we're, we're talking about investing originally three-hundred-and-seventy-some thousand dollars for a project, and then another forty or fifty thousand based on equipment's age, we, we need to be real confident and sure we're all, we're all on the same page, and, so it's, it's not taking anything away from anybody, we just want to start over and, and make sure that we have everything properly documented as far as what is the age of this equipment, so we will be, we will be rebidding, Brian, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so that ball goes back into your court now to, to start that process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, so that, that pretty much covers that issue, we're down to our committee reports, and we'll start with, Grant, start today.
I had a MRCC meeting, Minnesota Road County's caucus, pretty much discussed what happened at the legislative session, and, you know, one of the big issues they've been working on is the transportation funding, and, you know, it was, I guess some good, some bad, more money put into the local road improvement program than's ever been done before, but the downside of that was that a lot of it was earmarked, so, which is an issue that's going to be worked on in the future. And, let's see, I had an executive committee meeting with the Grand Fork River Economic Development Commission last week, and just an update on, on some of the projects that are going on there, nothing real significant for this meeting, and the following day, on behalf of the EDC, I attended the kickoff for the action agenda for the Valley Prosperity Partnership, which is something that's been worked on for the last, oh, probably year to two years, to try and tie everybody together up and down the valley in terms of working on economic development issues, and, and supporting things that need to be supported. I think that was it for me.
Okay, last week, I did attend the Family Healthcare Center, I went to the farewell party for Patricia Patron, she's been our director there, and has just led us through the building of the new building, the new clinic, and it's been a very, very great period of time that she's been our director, and she's moving on to Arizona to follow her husband, where he's got a, a new job as a physician down there, and anyway, it was a, it was a good send-off for her, she's done so well for us, and the community really owes her a big, big gratitude, I think. The other thing, I had a Lakeland Board meeting yesterday morning, and pretty routine business, it wasn't anything that they have, they are to the point of ordering their cars for that, that program of, of, I can't remember what it's called, the car.
Enterprise, yeah.
Yeah, and, so we'll find out how that works for them in the, in the near future. Also, I had a campaign meeting yesterday for, for the Historical Society again, and we're progressing with, with some new and exciting plans there, so I think that'll be, that'll be made public pretty soon. I am gonna attend the Adult Mental Health meeting for Wayne this afternoon, so...
Yeah, and I think, I had mentioned that, too, for that one, we should maybe have a motion to include per diem on that, because...
We did that last time.
Okay, all right, very good, I couldn't remember if we did that, thank you. Okay, is that it, John?
Yep.
Okay, well, last week was one of those weeks where I had nothing to report, which was, no, that's not gonna be the same for this one, but, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, there's a busy week around here, we had a construction meeting out at the motor vehicle department, and working through some little issues there, some plumbing issues that we're fighting with, but the tentative date is either June twentieth or twenty-seventh to move back in, so the project that you approved for paving, repaving that parking lot to be done by the thirteenth or thereabouts is, is really timely, that's gonna really work out, so, they're really moving along out there, they've got, last Wednesday, they had everything sheet rocked, and you can really go in there, and if you stop by and get the perspective of what it's going to look like, it's, and, and every comment that I hear out there with the contractors, and the people, and even the public that, that stopped by, they say it's, you know, it's about time, so I think they really appreciate your action on that, so...
I need to commend them for making this new temporary space work, I mean, I've been in it twice for license, since I've been in that area.
Yeah, good.
You gotta wait a little while, but no longer than you did before.
No, that's right.
I want to, I agree, I, I've been over there a few times, just to kind of see the progress there, and, and the confined space that, that our staff is working under over there, and with the incredible amount of traffic.
Yep.
I, I can see how they're all completely exhausted at the end of the day, so...
And they keep smiling somehow.
They do.
Yeah, yeah, so, they'll be, they're, this, the June twentieth couldn't come soon enough.
That's exactly right, but you know, the first week, I went in there a few days after we'd moved over, because we'd gotten things, and, and to tell you the truth, I, from the IT people to our maintenance staff, to the motor vehicle staff, they worked until four-thirty that day, and then we had to move umpteen many lines, the county did, I'll say, and I went back out Saturday morning and helped them clean up a little bit, because I wanted it presentable to the public, and everything was working, the phone lines, the computers, the, the desk was set up, and how it was gonna flow, and, you know, I know that's the way it should work, but it worked very, very well, and frankly, went in there a couple days later, and they said, you know, if our remodeled space on the other side looks anything like this, we just can't wait to get into it, so they're really excited about it, so...
We're happy with what they're doing, that's for sure. What else you got, Ryan?
Well, a little meeting with Public Health, they're gonna be bringing, in a couple weeks, bringing a smoking policy, a revised, or for your consideration, so we've had some discussion in regards to that, I'll let her reveal the, the request, and see where you want to go with that.
Anti-smoking, I hope.
What's that?
Anti-smoking, I hope, that's...
Well, it's anti-smoking, yeah.
Almost criminal.
Maybe I shouldn't...
Nervate here.
But I attended some meetings with the maintenance staff, working through, we'll get through that, had some personnel issues to deal with, Darren was gone last week for week's vacation, we had the administrative advisory as the diversion, and I think you're probably all aware that they're looking at authorization possibly in the House this week, and the Senate next week for authorization of that diversion, and that's, that's a real big deal, a real big deal.
It is.
Tended the law enforcement memorial last Wednesday at, at noon, Bill was one of the speakers at it. And we touched on the elevator issue that created some, a little stress and strain last week in regards to it, and, Mr. Chair, I visited with you just briefly, and I know Frank had shown some interest in this, and he's on the building committee, or the campus improvement committee, but I know I'd asked if, if we would, we would enjoy a commissioner joining us on the interview panel...
Okay.
For selecting a new maintenance supervisor, I think it's an important position, really important position, we'd like to have your input on it, so...
Do you know when you're planning that, what time?
Yeah, it'll be a couple weeks yet, because we're advertising right now, we're advertising for a couple weeks, and then we should be able to get some interviews going within maybe three weeks or so.
I'd be glad to help.
Okay, great.
That's why you get...
Thank you.
Anything else, Brian?
Just that we have been in communication, Commissioner, with, with Enterprise again, and Georgia's waiting for them to respond with now a written contract that Jenny will review, she's reviewed some things in the future, and we'll see what, what we want to do there, what you folks want to do.
Is this on the sleep deal that you've been... Is this on the sleep thing or something?
Yes, mhm, yeah, yeah, it's not the same program, because we are a government entity, they're nonprofit, so, with that, Mr. Chair, I think that'll...
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, done.
Done.
Laura sent me an email that there will be a primary.
Yes, right?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, all right, okay, with that, we're adjourned.